Dylan, we're gonna have to kick you out. 10 o'clock. Hey, good job getting done it under time though. Well done.
I tried to talk fast anyway.
All right, Bennett County Commissioners are back in session, so we'd like to request Commissioner Bullock to come back to the front. All right, we have a bid opening today. We have two of them. And the first one that we will do is for the county fuel. Is that okay, Shanda, if we start there? We submitted, let's see, our solicitation was an invitation to bid to provide bulk diesel and unleaded fuel to four county locations. We had two addendums that have been issued, one in response to questions received, one revising the bid closing and opening dates. No bid bond was required. We will open the bids and read aloud to acknowledge response from the individual person and businesses and the bid amounts. It does not, reading the bid does not confirm that the bid is responsive. Further review will perform that. Once the bids have been opened, we will make a motion to accept them and take them under advisement. And then then all suppliers who submit a bid will receive notification once the project has been awarded. So with that, Shanda.
Chairman, we have received two bids. These are sealed bids with your permission. I will unseal them.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hough, if you'll refresh your screen, you should be able to see. And while we did ask for detailed information in regards to unleaded and diesel for each location, we are awarding this as a whole. So if you'll just total up and read one bid amount per submission.
Uh, let's see. For whatever reason, I am, I see that there are four submissions, but it's not coming up yet.
You're in the wrong one. Four submissions are for the diesel generator.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
And this bid was required 87 octane.
Bulk fuel, sorry about that.
Once you get in there, you are looking for Schedule A bulk fuel pricing sheet. Should bring up that Excel sheet.
We have two vendors that have submitted, Atlantic Petroleum and Conrad Bischoff, and I have no I think we'll train one of you two to do this in the future. Stress levels. Just tell them you can't even volunteer.
That's why you get the big bucks.
All right, you said the, the Schedule A pricing sheet, Shanda?
Correct. We'll open in Excel.
There it is. Okay, the first one is for Atlantic Petroleum. Okay, so we have a unit price, and you want me to add up all of the unit prices?
Right, if you'll just select them all.
So for Atlantic Petroleum, the sum of all of the unit prices is $4.04, 4.04595. Is that what you're expecting? Okay. And then the second one is from Conrad Bischoff. Okay, Conrad Bischoff. There's some, and I don't know if they did this right, but it's minus .36. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is on margin per gallon based on the rack rate.
Okay. So those are what we have then.
So what's the rack rate?
So it fluctuates every day.
I know that, but I mean, as of today, what would be the rack rate?
Oh.
So how do we compare one, how do we compare one bid against the other one?
So both of them are based on, so regardless of where, if that rack rate is a dollar or if it's $10, right? So they're bidding off of the margin per gallon. And so that's what we are evaluating, is how much plus or minus they're going to charge us above whatever that rack rate is for the day. Because the rack rate's gonna be the same for anybody picking up at that terminal.
Well, I worked for a petroleum company for a while. I understand the rack rate. But for my purposes here, you give me a number of 4 point something, and now we have a minus three. How, those two numbers are not...
There's a big difference.
Yeah, so we need, we need the margin against the margin or whatever the today's rate, you know, whatever. To me, I, that's what I'm asking, that question of, we need margin against margin because the rack rate is gonna be constant. Or it'll be the same for both companies, right?
The rack rate?
Yeah, so you're getting it out here at the pipeline?
Yes, correct.
So what we need to do is figure out what the margin is for both companies and compare those two numbers.
And that's what Commissioner Hough has read off today.
If I understand his question correctly, if the rack rate is a dollar, then the other, the first bid was a dollar plus 4 cents.
Actually, it's $4.
Oh yeah, $4. That'd be five.
So it'd be $5.
And the other one would be, what, dollar minus .36 cents? So it'd be 97.
So we, as long as we're tucking apples in apples here because you're measuring, those are two different numbers.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make, we're clear on that.
Okay, so we've opened the bids, we've read the bids, so I would entertain a motion to accept them.
I'd make a motion that we accept the bids, send them to our group for evaluation, and see what happens.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further questions?
Do you have any questions?
Um, I don't. I would like to look over the bids and kind of look into what you're talking about.
Well, I just wonder if you had a question right up front, so.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next one is a bid opening for the Bennett County Stage 1 qualification for the detention center diesel generator. So this is just stage one of the bid process, and we are essentially looking for qualifications to provide this, provide the solution. There were four addendums that have been issued, two addendums canceling pre-bid meetings, one rescheduling calendar events and revisiting the bid to select a general contractor, and one addendum in response to questions received. No bid bonds are required at this time. Opening bids, we will read those aloud and then make a motion to accept the bids. So this is the detention center. Okay.
Chairman, we have received four bids on this, and it is sealed with your permission. I'll unseal them.
We have four companies that have submitted, and it is Arco Electric, Legacy Power, Pro Builders, and Barron Group, and I have no conflicts of interest with any of those.
So that is all we need to do for the qualifications is see which of the companies...
Because there's nothing else to read. Okay, so again, the four companies are Arco Electric Idaho Incorporated, Barron Group, Legacy Power Systems, and Pro Builders Incorporated. Any questions? And I would entertain a motion to accept those qualifications.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept those four bids and proceed with evaluation.
Okay, if you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Shanda. Emma? Actually, let's go Adam real quick. Adam should be just two second.
Morning, Commissioner. Adam McKee this morning as Emergency Communications Director. I bring a question to you guys today regarding these radios that, oh, this is for the ambulance board. Do you guys need to go into the ambulance board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to go into Board of Ambulance, and after the discussion, come back into Board of Ambulance, or Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this morning I bring a discussion to you related to some radios that were given to me by the ambulance district for surplus. In the past, agencies, number one, emergency communications does not pay for radio gear for any agencies. The agencies themselves buy these radios. We pay the subscription fee for them with the 911 fees, but not the equipment fees. In the past, we've been given surplus radios from agencies such as Chubbick or the Pocatelle Police Department, and we've been able to redeploy those to South County Fire or other agencies with no ramifications because they were surplus bought by those agencies. I've been given some radios. This is the radio itself. I've got some pricing on them. They're anywhere between $150 and $400 online in surplus value. And what I'm asking for is some guidance from the ambulance district as to do you guys want to continue with some type of value if I were to redeploy these. The emergency management office has kind of spoken with some of the fire districts and said, we may have some radios available, but where these were purchased by the ambulance district rather than given to a surplus from another agency, I wanted to clear it with you guys before we redeploy these to anybody and see if you would like me to recoup some of the value of them, because I feel they fall somewhere in that $250 de minimis price range. I could give you an example, Caribou County redeploy's theirs at the cost of $100 per radio. After that, it's done and done. The radio then becomes the property of the agency that purchases it, and so upkeep, maintenance, and all that stuff would be on the agency itself. And I just wanted to get some guidance from you if you, again, these are, you know, 15-plus year old radios, don't have a lot of value, but for volunteer firefighting departments that don't have radios and don't have a budget to buy the quite expensive new radios, these would work for them. But as they were purchased by the ambulance district, I wanted to get some guidance as to whether or not I should recoup any funding for them.
So we donate them, and we can still pass on the maintenance, all the responsibilities?
Yes, if we give them to those agencies, they become property of those agencies. We don't have any liability. I just want to know if you feel I should be asking for some funding from those guys or if I can just give them out. I, again, we just got a box of them, and suddenly there's a lot of people asking for them because they're expensive to buy new. And I just, and as, if these were surplus from another agency that had purchased them, I'd just give them out. But these were purchased by the ambulance district, so technically I just want to make sure the ambulance district is okay with me giving them away.
I have no problem. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And I think they should be at a zero value. They're already depreciated to nothing.
Yes.
So why would we burden somebody else with a $100 capital cost to them? I, I don't have a problem giving them away, but at zero cost. Do you have a problem, Chris?
No. Do we need to do a resolution though to give those to the entities?
That's a whole other ballgame.
I would err on the side of doing so.
I could do that. If we deploy them, we could bring a resolution back that you could sign that shows that we're giving them over to those agencies.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
That'd be good, just to say in that resolution who we give them to.
Yeah.
Each organization.
Then does the county then need to accept that resolution, in another resolution?
You would sign.
We'll sign.
Yeah, the resolution.
So receiving those on that end, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Perfect.
You're clear to go?
I appreciate that. That's all. Perfect, I appreciate it.
Okay, and the motion was to exit, so we're done with that. Emma? Emma and company.
If the board is open here, then I'll have more to do with the presentation first before my item.
Okay, looks good to me.
I'm gonna sit over here so I can just look through the paperwork for a second.
Okay, sounds good.
Introduce yourself, and away you go.
Okay, I'm the Bennett County Web Design Intern, and today I'll be presenting about the web design implementations I've done across the county websites.
And your name is?
Maritza Rodriguez. Sorry. Okay. And for this slide, I want to talk about the stats. So how does our community engage with our sites? According to our system software analytics, 49% of the, of our users are using mobile devices, and the other 49% are using desktop devices. And the other 2% goes to other internet connected devices like tablets. But since most of our engagement is with mobile and desktop, I mainly focus on fixing the layouts for these devices. And I also want to point out the average session, average user session is 49 seconds. And one of my goals was to increase the engagement on the websites, so I did this by adding like interactive features like buttons, tabs, and, or even like charts. And I also wanted to point out just some of the top three websites visited, which is the Bennett County homepage, the motor vehicle page, and the driver's license division.
I'm a little disappointed in the Commissioner's page.
I was gonna say.
We didn't even make the top 10.
Yeah, top 25.
I was not too offended by that, but I was sad.
I'm tickled to death.
I just want to be number one.
We are on the other end.
I think you guys are like 21.
Yeah, I know. I know where we're at.
All right, and then for, I just wanted to highlight the main goals for my internship. So basically, the main implementations I did was focusing on making the websites mobile friendly. This was done by adjusting the website's frame for mobile devices. I noticed that on a lot of webpages, the text frame was like out of bounds, and it was not readable. So I did that for like over 20 websites. And then also just fixing the text and image interference, as well as grammar and contact, content accuracy. I fixed the spelling and grammar on these webpages, and I make sure that the content is accurate and up to date. There was a lot of old information on there, as well as broken links. There was many broken links or just like irrelevant links that had expired domains, so I wanted to fix that so it doesn't send users to like, you know, scam like websites or anything like that. And then another main implementation was the ease of use, which improved user experience by making like the content easy to find and read. I did this by adding tabs and dividers so the websites don't, aren't overwhelming for the user, so they can find and read the sections more clearly. And then for design improvements, I implemented tools within our software, like even just adding like little pops of color or icons to the pages, and making some of the header sections not static, so making it interactive. Like I added image sliders to the sheriff's page. And then for the next slide, I'll just showcase some of these implementations. So for this page, you can see on the, on the left side, this was like the old, the old site. There was a lot of image and text interference, you can see on the bottom. And the first half of the section is the crime resource section, which it's a lot of links that just don't work or just weren't relevant and expired. And then on the right side is like the after. You can see that the sections are just bolded, and they also have like icons added and makes it more visually appealing and just cleaner to look at. And then for the next slide, this is also the sheriff's website. I mean, do you, which one looks more cleaner to you guys, the left or the right?
Right.
Yeah. And the right also contains more information, but it's organized better. You can click through the tabs, the user can find the sections easier. And yeah. And then the last, one of the last examples I have is the Bennett County Auditor website. It makes it more interactive. I added a pie chart that when the user hovers over a section, they can see the percentage and statistics of where their tax dollar appropriation for the county comes from, which I really liked because then they can see and view like where the money is going. Yeah, these are just like some of the implementations I've had. And compared to the old version, I'd say it's more welcoming and warm, the after. Yeah, do you guys have any questions or feedback?
I, I prepped you.
Yeah.
So do you feel like you've raised the engagement rate?
I do. I feel like with these interactive features like the pie chart and like adding tabs, and also I did like a, like in-place scroller that kind of like decreases the amount of scrolling that the user has to do. So yeah, I think engagement is better because of some of the layouts.
And I was looking through here, and your page views per user is not too shabby. So what, to me, that tells me that people are finding what they want very quickly on the website.
Yes.
Okay, and then do you know, where are they, where are people coming, how are they finding us? Are they finding us through the search engines? Are they typing in the URLs directly? How are, how are they getting here?
I would say that they're coming in through like the search engines, like they type in on the, on their browser, basically. Yeah.
Okay.
And also like, most of the pages have like redirections, so like they have blurbed and I'll take them to the next site.
Couple of questions. One, thank you, but what are, what's the next goal? And what's, what do you feel Bennett County needs to be doing to move forward and progress in there?
I think just making sure that like the department heads actually are like viewing their websites, because some of the websites, the information isn't updated, like some, some of them have like 2023 information, and just like making sure, or asking for feedback from the people that come into the departments. Like the assessors page, they have frequently asked questions, but like I still haven't gotten that information yet, but I wanted to add that. So yeah, I guess just like getting input from the people and seeing what they want.
No, you're fine. I completely agree with what she mentioned there, and something that I want to implement over the next, you know, my time here is to do kind of an end of year check-in with department heads and send an email and ask them to review their webpage, check links, you know, send me anything that would need to be updated for the new year, that kind of thing, just to kind of help us do better in keeping our content updated, like she mentioned.
So were you trying to tell me something there?
No, I, the Commissioner's page is up there.
We're talking about a short-term goal when you're saying my term here. I'm just curious what you're trying to tell me.
I did not mean to imply anything like that.
So a follow-up, how, how relevant and current would you say our website is compared to the industry or websites in general? Is our design still fresh?
I think the design is still fresh, but I think just some of the content is out of date or like it's not necessarily relevant. There's just sometimes text information just like to fill up space. And I just say like taking out the irrelevant information, just put information that users want to actually know about.
Okay.
I think the rest is good.
Okay, and the only last question I had, and I know Adam's here, but we crashed the last election, and you want to talk about how we've kind of made changes so that won't happen again? Adam, if you want to come up or if you can answer that? Sure, I can answer that. We've, we've had a couple of changes to that. Adam McKee now is the IT director here. Yeah, we actually overran the amount of RAM and utilization in that web server during the election based on people refreshing the C content, waiting for updates on who had won elections. So we've done a few things. Number one, we've implemented, we'd already moved to CloudFlare as we've spoken about. On election night, we turned on the highest level of CloudFlare, which if the website were to crash again, will immediately start serving a static version of the website. Now that won't have the dynamic updates on it, but until the traffic levels subside, it would still continue to show our website. You wouldn't get a 404 or a 451 error overrun. The other thing we've done is we've doubled the capacity on that web server. We simply bumped it up from 8 gigs of RAM to 16 gigs of RAM. We bumped up the storage space, the processor space. We just doubled it up. I, we had, I've been watching since we did that. We, the traffic levels have not increased over that night, but I expect fully, once we have another election, we're gonna get the same kind of results, so. Those are the two things we've done to mitigate. We extended the web server, just bumped up the price or the capacity for it, and then turned on the CloudFlare maximum protection. And I've left that CloudFlare on because it's, it's actually really good. It vets everybody that visits our website when they hit the site, and if they're not real traffic, it just sends them off into a black hole. So people are, that want to see our site are getting in and being able to see it without, you know, we wouldn't have to run into like the denial of service attacks we've talked about. It wouldn't be able to overwhelm the sites.
Is that, can I ask, when I pull up the website on my phone or on a different page than my typical computer, it asks me to click a button? That's what it is?
That's exactly what it is. Or if you've recently done a captcha for any other CloudFlare-based site, it'll automatically, you'll just see the little, please wait while Bennett County verifies you're a real user. It spins for a second, then shows it's a real website. We've just left that in place because it's just proven to be an effective technology. CloudFlare, they basically built a ring around the entire internet, that they're, you know, like 80% of all the traffic in the world on the internet goes through CloudFlare's CDN network. So now with that in place, if we were to have a website being overwhelmed, CloudFlare will step in and simply say, well, here, we're just gonna show you the static page while the rest of it catches up to, to, to the amount of traffic utilized.
Cool.
Thanks.
The question I've got is, worse than what? We're getting a better webpage. What are we trying to invite more? And is it gonna be interactive? Are they gonna look for particular information? Where do we go here to make it really a usable webpage?
Well, I think the, yeah, the overall goal here, bringing Maritza on our team, was to make the, the customer service element of the website better. Like she said, 50% of our traffic is coming on, on our mobile phones, and that's something that I neglected to work on during my time here. So having that customer service element to our website encourages folks to have a good experience when they're doing business with the county and building on that from here on out. Continuing to ask folks, did you have trouble finding this information on our webpage? Was there something that you were looking for that was missing? Was it buried in a block of text, you know? And just continuing to move forward and get better and better with our, our customer service online.
I would echo Maritza's comments about streamlining, especially for like the sheriff's page. The previous website was simply so verbose. When the new site was implemented about three or four years ago, we just brought a lot of that stuff over part and parcel and did not pare down any of that text. So some pages, like the example, the detention center, there was an entire two-page chunk of what the detention center is and how it's worked. And I don't know if that stuff's relevant in, on the main site to take up a big block of space. So either by paring that down, you increase the speed at which people can find the information they're looking for. And then you can also leave that stuff there, but maybe link it or tab it. She's put these stuff in tabs, so that they really are interested in reading that extra information they can, but not necessarily having to dig through it just to find, you know, I just need the detention handbook. Well, there it is, it's right there, instead of, it's at the bottom of this paragraph kind of thing.
So are you inviting input from the webpage?
Well, for, when we first launched the website back in, was it 2021? We had a tab on all the pages asking for people's input for, we left it up for like six months, and we didn't really receive much at all.
I mean, it's, to me, that's why, hopefully we get some of that feedback or input.
And occasionally do. Occasionally we'll get an email from folks saying like, oh, I can't find this, especially like those two top pages, motor vehicle and driver's license. I think they get the most feedback from folks asking for, for stuff to be more clear on the website, and so we responded to those as they come in. But what I mentioned earlier is doing that annual check-in with departments and asking them to review their page specifically for their content.
Speaking of that, have you reached out to those departments to say, hey, here's the highest read content? Can we, what can we do to make that easier to see? Have you done anything like that or even made those changes just on your own?
Yeah, I kind of just made those changes on my own, and I kind of, I asked them for feedback. I'm like, oh, like what do you think needs to be more prominent on the page? And then they'll usually tell me.
Great. I know I'm biased, but I think we got one of the best websites in the state, so. But I'm biased. Hey, we've gotten kudos from the state about it, so we're doing right.
This one I've looked at. Okay. Thank you. Have a great report.
And I just want to say how grateful I am to have Maritza on the team. She's been an amazing asset, fantastic intern. I'm so excited to see what she's gonna do when she graduates in May, and really thankful for the CPI program and the commission's support to bring on interns like Maritza.
So follow-up to that, do you feel like the program's been beneficial to you and your education and helping you grow?
Yeah, I think like sometimes when I was working with Divvy, like I had to look through some of the CSS, so that's just like getting familiar with the language, I guess, was helpful and beneficial to me, like learning more about it.
Okay, good.
I only have one thing. She's too loud. She's so noisy.
Never know if she's back there.
So disruptive in the office, too.
No, we are very, very grateful. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. All right, Emma?
Emma Iannico, Public Information Officer, here to discuss... Emma Iannico, Public Information Officer, here to discuss a mileage reimbursement request for my trip to Maryland for the advanced PIO course.
So did you drive back there?
No, I, I flew out of Idaho Falls to Dulles Airport in DC. It was the, it was a four-goal, I worked logistically for scheduling instead of going through Pocatello or Salt Lake. And so, the, the mileage request is the, uh, drive time from my home to the airport and back. My husband picked me up from the airport on Saturday when I flew in, so that was the mileage request.
Did you not take a county car?
No, because I would have been gone, I had a personal vacation in Island Park the weekend before I flew out, so I just went from Island Park to the airport and didn't feel it was appropriate to bring a vehicle, a county vehicle for that long. It would have been like 14, 15 days out of service for other folks, so.
And I'll just say, and I told you, is, policy is that you come to us before and we have that discussion, and because you went on a personal vacation as part of this, our policy is pay half. And so that's what I'm doing.
And is that the request for half or is it?
No, it's for two times, right there.
Yeah, it was for my husband driving from the home to the airport and back, um, in our vehicle, so, uh, but whatever's policy.
Yeah, I would agree, that's the policy at this point in time, so. Any other thoughts?
Nope. So, we'll adjust that accordingly.
Do I need to?
And it would not be from home, it would be from a courthouse.
Okay.
That's just how mileage works.
Yeah, we'll just make that adjustment from, go.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you. Hal. Hal and friends.
Have to wake up Tristan.
Yeah, we got to wake up Tristan. Um, before we get too far down the line on that, the short discussion would be, uh, public hearing notice for the new fees. Is there any discussion on this? Just putting out a public notice for the new fees for the agricultural protection area designation and reconsideration of commissioners' decisions. Any discussion on that? Then I would move that we go ahead and authorize the publication of this notice. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, go ahead Tristan.
Tristan Porkwin, Assistant Planning Director.
Janay Penrod, Code Enforcement Officer.
And we are here to discuss the code enforcement process. Um, before we dive into what we do, I just wanted to ask first, do you have any particular questions or anything that you would like us to add into our code enforcement presentation before we start?
I don't think so. I think just lay, get started.
Okay, perfect. So, right now, the process that we have established as far as priority goes for our code enforcement, our top priority is any code enforcement, any code violations reported by county residents. So that takes top priority for us and we try to get to those the quickest out of all of the code enforcement violations we have. And then our second priority would be structures that are built without a permit. Our third priority is any problems that any planning and development staff found while out in the field, and then kind of on the same priority line are any problems found by the assessor's office. If the assessor's office finds a permit or a building that's been erected without a permit, then that kind of takes a higher priority than anything that we find out in the field, since it is in line with a structure being built without a permit. So, the process that we are currently using for code enforcement, as soon as we get that request that we might have a violation, we set up a case file in our permitting portal and then we go through and we research, so we find out everything we can about the property. Is this actually a valid violation of our ordinances and codes? Is it something that maybe there is actually a permit on and we just don't remember that there was a permit, since we see so many? As soon as we find out that it is a violation of our ordinance, then we send a letter to the property owner regarding the issue, outline how to resolve the issue, and give them a 30-day deadline to reach out to us. Typically, I would say most of our responses are received on that first letter. They usually call Janay, Janay can get them into the office and we can sit down and say, this is what we need to have happen for you to come into compliance, and usually a second letter doesn't need to be sent. If we don't hear back from them, then a second letter is sent and that letter, they are given two weeks' time to get in contact with us. If after that second letter, we still have no response, we send a third and final notice through certified letter to make sure that they have actually received these letters, the third one is certified. And then if we still have no response, then we start our process with infractions. We get in touch with John with the prosecutor's office to make sure, do we have enough information to start citing them? And as long as he feels we have a good enough case, then we start, we call a sheriff, make sure we can have a sheriff out there just in case, and Janay goes out, cites them, um, and then that whole process starts with the prosecutor's office.
Okay. And from what I've heard, you've had fantastic success with just that first letter and getting people in, is that correct?
Yes.
What is, what is kind of general response that you've been receiving?
A lot of people don't realize what they need to do to come into compliance or realize that they weren't in compliance, but most of the time they're really nice and willing to work with us and get everything taken care of as soon as they can.
Okay. And then, what would you estimate, just off the top of your head, are the code violations out there that we may or may not know about? Is it a lot?
Yes.
Really? Yes.
There's a whole street I can think of right now that I still need to go out to and start taking care of.
And, and given the, your part-time, how long do you think it would take you to get through all of those, given your part-time status?
With the hours that I'm currently working, it takes up my whole day. Um, it would be nice to have a couple of more hours to get to everything, but most of the time, I can get through four or five in a day, and that's starting the process, beginning to sending the very first letter, so. And also handling everything else that, if someone calls and they want to set up a meeting, then that takes up an hour, hour and a half of my time, plus drive time if I have to go out into the county somewhere, driving back to the office, getting everything taken care of, uploading all of the pictures, getting the letter typed up, printing it out, scanning it into our system, making sure that we have all of, or everything documented properly.
Good.
Well, I, congratulations. That's all I can say. This is super Cal fragilistic ex- alago. I got to say that. Well, nothing else is to be said, right?
Spell that.
Uh-huh.
Spell that.
Mary Poppins. Anyway, I am so very, very grateful. 90% of the people that want to talk to us are want to talk about violation, and we've never, well, we're working on it, we're working on it. No, we have a, a plan and a process now, and I appreciate you going through that process. One, two, three, you're given every opportunity, you're, you're trying to get them to the point where it can be settled, and you've experienced that you have individuals that never paid their water bill, and you send them out a notice, and you send them out a notice, and finally you have to go shut their water off. But that's the process, and that's, that's, I'm glad we have a process and we're, we're doing something. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to add too, yesterday, we actually had someone come into the office after receiving the letter, and they pointed out that they had been doing what they were doing for multiple years and hadn't had an issue. And so I just explained to them that this position, was it something that has been here before I got here? And with the workload of all of the other people in our office, sometimes things can fall through the cracks, but now everything should be taken care of, because sometimes people like to point fingers and say, well, my neighbor, you know, and I'm like, well, thank you for bringing that to my attention, I will get that taken care of as well.
Is it okay if I use your name?
Well, I appreciate your priorities and I think that's a good, good way to go, the code violations, and then the structures without permits. I appreciate that criteria level for that.
You know, bless your heart. Code enforcement is probably one of the most difficult things in a city or county that we even have to deal with. Um, and most of the time, how long are you going to stay? Because that's usually the issue that, try, hiring code enforcement is easy, keeping them is very difficult. So, anyway, what, what are your plans in the future? Are you growing up somewhere and going to college and?
No.
Are you trying to ship around?
I'm all grown up now, so.
I'm just curious, why you are walking into a speeding bullet? Because when you get this thing started, whether it's dogs in a city or whatever it is, it's a difficult task. I appreciate what you're going through and, uh, but on the other side, we need to deal with kindness and education, because there are a lot of people out there who do not know that they're being complained about and they've violated, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you know, we can do this with a process, with an arm around them and say, let us help you comply.
Yes.
Let us help you to get back on good status with your neighborhood.
Right.
Well, some neighborhoods don't work, but anyway, thank you for what you do, because it's a very difficult task.
Yeah, and that has been the process so far. A lot of people just don't understand or don't realize that that's what they needed to do, and that's the first thing that comes out of their mouth. Oh, I had no idea. What do I need to do? No problem, we understand, I get it. If you need time, if you need to wait until the snow melts and your ground thaws out to start moving junk off of your property, that's totally fine. We're willing to work with you as long as you're willing to work with us.
We don't have any dead carcasses that are stinking up the neighborhood like I don't.
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, wow.
So, but as far as what my plan is from here on out, I thoroughly enjoy where I work, and I've been telling these guys back at the office that I have worked at some other offices that I didn't enjoy half as much as I do now, and I don't really have the mentality of like, oh, I don't feel like going to work today. You know, I enjoy coming to the office and doing what I do, and if I get tired of looking at a screen, there's always opportunity for me to get out of the office and go and do site visits and find more code violations, so I enjoy that I can be in the office or out of the office.
Well, based on, based on the violations you think are out there and everything, I think this is one that we look at during budget season to maybe give you some more opportunities to take care of stuff, so.
Yeah, just to give an idea, since October, you counted, how many code violations have you started?
56.
So, just to give a number.
And majority of those are people who have called in, nothing that I've gone out and looked for, but when I go out and do site visits, I'm like, look at this guy, and look at these ones, and we should get that one going too. So there are plenty out there and a lot of work that needs to be done.
Unfortunately, we could rename that whole department code enforcement, because really everybody out there, that's what you're doing, is code enforcement. So, it, it's what we have to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update, and I think that's a great process.
Thanks.
Hal and friends?
Hal and friends? Is that more than we can say for you, Kyle? Or I should, that's kind of what you implied there.
You've never said that about me, so I don't know. I'll take it.
So, the purpose of this discussion?
He says, buddy, before you start, Hal Jensen, Planning Director, to directly answer that question, how long does she plan to stay? Through the budget cycle, she'll be full-time, and she's going to stay a long time. If we can get her, if we can get that position figured out and have it make sense financially, we would love to have her work into a full-time position.
Thank you. All right, the purpose of this discussion is a few other items.
That policy is driven specifically to comply with the outline of what we're required to do by ordinance. That isn't something that we developed because it was convenient and a process, that is straight out of the, the ordinance.
Got you. All right. Now, the purpose of this discussion is, a couple of months ago, we had a discussion about what to do with the facility there on South Fifth, whether we relocate it, do some other things that way. We sent Dan and Hal out to do some, some work, and he's worked with Kyle and, and Tori, a lot of things, and so today is to find out what you found and then set a direction for going forward. So, Hal?
Real quickly, two items in relation to that previous discussion, two things that should have occurred that did not occur, was to find out what the value of the existing property on 5500 South Fifth is worth, as well as what that acreage of bare ground, et cetera. Um, we'll continue to go down that path to find those numbers and dollar values, depending on what we decide today. So, had different conversations, Tori, Dan, Kyle. We were looking at how we could develop facilities for respective departments. Tori was the first one out with the shoot, because he has a potential construction project at the existing facility. He has money in a budget, so we started going down that path first, came up with a, a plan that works for him for a potential new building, about 4,300 square feet, plus or minus, so that component was plugged into the equation. The next one was talking to Kyle about, okay, if we were to do this, what makes sense for a facility that would take care of the business side of public works, road and bridge, et cetera, planning and development, and then a potential, um, public hearing room, training room across facility that would work. We came up with the general parts and pieces, all of the components that go into that equation about where all of the buildings would potentially go, uh, and then we started putting numbers together. So if we were to go to the new prop, new facility, complete new facility at the Porton of Gap property, we have a 7,200 square foot office building for road and bridge and planning and development with a public hearing room, a new shop facility, relocate weed and mosquito, vehicle storage, a new fence and gate around the perimeter, new well and water distribution system, septic tank and drain field that would take care of all of the respective toilet rooms, stormwater retention, new approach and drive, new parking lot, and a new fuel filling station that came and slapped me on the back of the head, because we had everything identified and going down the path, and then the fuel filling station became problematic. Not that it wasn't, it couldn't be built, but the logistics of moving a fuel filling station out there, knowing that the sheriff's department has a greater need of any other department along that South Fifth corridor, started to throw up a red flag for not having adjacency. Became a pretty good-sized dollar value, I don't necessarily have anything that's absolute, but we went down the path of what happens if we use the existing facility and try to capitalize on the fact that we wouldn't have septic tank and drain filled, we wouldn't have water, we wouldn't have new fence gates, you know, just basic elements of infrastructure and talking about buildings. So, in an existing facility, a new 7,200 square foot office building, which we talked and kind of just for a general square footage that we knew would work for us, remodel existing building as needed and add four bays to the existing shop, take care of the required maintenance that they currently have under budget with roof replacement and some garage doors and some other items, et cetera. A new vehicle storage at the third level, because to master plan this and create a campus environment, all of that storage facility along the South Fifth corridor that fronts the street would basically, basically need to be taken down to accommodate new buildings and then moved to the upper tier. And then we would have demolition of existing planning and development office, demolish the vehicle storage facility along Fifth Avenue, reconfigure the existing parking lot, and then basically go through a master plan. We have one building, depending on how that would all fall out, we would have one building that would need to connect to sewer and water, and we would have some additional capacity and user fees to the city of Pocatello. Gut instinct from what, through some numbers, if we were to capitalize on the existing facility, we would probably be, um, three and a half, maybe five million less expensive than if we were to completely relocate, and I don't have any numbers relative to the values of the two properties to say what those could do to offset one another if one was sold and allocated the other direction. So, our recommendation is to basically stay put and master plan that as an office campus if we can.
Questions?
I talked to Kyle a little bit this morning. I looked at some of them designs, and I'm, I have no problem staying put. My, my one concern about the other facility out there is what value we could get out of it, selling it. There's no reason to keep it just out there, out where the snow grooming shack is.
Other than the snow grooming shack is on part of that property.
But that's-
And I don't have that land out south on our county assets, just so the commission knows.
You don't?
No. I didn't, I was not even brought aware that we owned it, so I need to get that information, because it does need to be insured. So, if somebody could-
It was a previous landfill.
Maybe we do have it then.
It was a previous landfill.
I probably need to get with, how would you be one that would be able to look at my lands and tell me what's what at our parcels?
So, but I, I think that we need to get it off the books. I mean, and move the groomer back over here. I think that we need to move Tori out from that complex there. I, I, I think that he's the oddball in there. I think that-
Not personally.
Not personally, but, but, I mean, and bring the groomer there, get rid of that other property. With what we sell that other property for, we got the ground above the, by the sheriff's office. We got the ground up here at the wellness complex. We have ground to make a coroner's office I'm building, and I would rather do that than keep, in the facility that we have that is a yard, that we have semis driving around and, and everything else, I, I would rather make that more specific instead of having the general public come into your office. I, I think that that would be a wiser move.
Tori and I had a conversation at Lake, excuse me, Commissioner, one of the items that, that brought up moving Tori as part of an overall campus environment and working it that way was the fact that we have readily available sewer and water. If we move him out on that Darby extension, we would have, I don't know how much, but we would have a pretty considerable, considerable dollar amount to extend sewer and water, you know, basically utilities to the site. Beyond that, all of the costs kind of wash.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I've been here at the majestic corner or whatever. I mean, I, I feel like we have-
Mystic Gardens.
Ground up there, and then the other part, and I talked to Kyle about, is we have a plot of ground out here that is a hayfield that we've been leasing out for quite a while.
Where's that at?
Out by the gravel pit that we share with Pocatello. McNabb's have leased it for a hayfield for a long time. I don't think that we're getting adequate return off of that. It's another place that we could sell and, and utilize those funds for some of these projects for the future. I, I think that that's been out there long enough. A lot of our growth and, and, I mean, we have a gravel pit on the other end of the county. I think that-
Yeah, one of the, Kyle, from Mr. Public Works Director, one of the things what we've talked about too is, is the county's moving that way, and we already have enough of gravel pits. That's getting a lot of houses in there and stuff like that. So, most of the gravel usage that we use for the road and bridge department is going to the south end, not necessarily, most everything appears paved, so it wouldn't hurt in our operation to move out uptown a little bit more with our pits, because we already have two pits down south.
Please tell me you don't need to open a new pit.
That's, we had that discussion too. There's a lot of housing going around.
That's a northbound category.
Where this ground is, where the hay is.
And, and in that equation, tried to be respectful of Tori and his needs and what makes sense, because as you said, he is an entity that works different than anything else that any of us in this room even fathom or comprehend. So, it needs to be a, I think the focus for where Tori would go really needs to be studied by the commission and find out what, and give us direction on what you think we should study for him in perhaps another location.
And I, I still think that right over here by the village, we have that leg out that is parking lot that there could be a coroner's office right there in that area.
Yeah, 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 where we currently have the stage parking-
Between Fourth and Fifth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Between the alley and-
I, I think we've acquired that ground, and I think that that, if we sell some of these grounds, I think that we could come up with the funds to, to do some of these projects, budget them, put them in the right budget year and stuff, but I think that that, as we're looking to the future.
Even distance-wise for us to get there, the sheriff's department is right adjacent to everything else. I, in my opinion, I think moving everything, you know, five, seven miles down is going to complicate travel, contemplate communications and everything else. I, I, in my opinion, I agree with, Tori is a unique situation. I'm not saying we need to ignore that, but I, I think he would be easier to move out of there than to move road and bridge out of there, and I even think the planning and zoning, you're close enough to Pocatello, people will drive there to get their permits. You had another, you know, 10 minutes, 15 minutes drive time from North County down there, so I'm inclined to stay where we're at and see what we got to do to make it, you know, a good office structure if we have to tear part of that down and rebuild. I think it's cheaper in the long run, because when you're dealing with that other location out there, you're dealing with, what are you doing with your water and your sewer? There is no public utilities out there. The fuel, like you say, the fuel for the sheriff's department, trying to move that is going to be ugly. I-
And we sit right on top of that rift right there.
Yeah.
So, what's subsoil and how far down to lava?
There's a lot of intangibles and some unintended consequences that I would be afraid of. So, my, right now, I'm more inclined to go down the avenue of what can we do to fix where we're at first. Then if we come into a barrier that we can't address, then let's do a part of that, rather than just say, "Let's sell 100% of it and then move." To me, I would rather take the cautious approach. I guess that's me. Background, you can jump too fast and too hard, and then you land right back on your can.
And also, so that you know, we've talked about some general concepts about this would be first, but this would need to be taken down, leaving everybody in their facilities, so that we weren't displacing someone to tear down and then have temporary offices and then move in, you know, the concept of just moving a department once, depending on how it all fill out. It has potential. It's, it, we, we, we have ideas. We know certain things will work, but until we actually have something solid from the commission, which is what this meeting's about, we've been cautious to go too far with absolutes.
And what I'm understanding, you know, try to restate it, and you guys correct me if I'm hearing it incorrectly, is put together a plan for staying put, rebuilding the, the space that would fit us, and find a proper location for Tori, and then bring that plan back to us, and then we can move forward from there. But I think what you've presented today is good. Does that-
Yes, and I, I would say, let's look at this between Fourth and Fifth.
Yeah, we've, we've got four or five options for Tori, so let's-
And we had the Lander facility that's going on the market in March.
True, so.
What is?
The Lander.
I think we ought to put him up in and in that piece of property that we just got.
There you go. To be determined.
That was a joke.
Okay, does that, does that work for you guys?
Well, and just to add to that, I'd, I'd say that would be our first option, is looking there and then up, up some of the property around the center.
Well, don't we also have property out at the landfill down in that lower part?
We've had that discussion. Tori doesn't have that.
Okay, well, and I understand that, and security, you know, and whatever it is, I, I appreciate his concern for some, you know, it is gated out there. I get where he's coming from, from there, and having somebody else there after hours or whatever, so I'm sensitive to that. And like you say, landfill, which brings up a point in our claims, why are cremations under Parks and Recreation? Sorry.
We'll talk about that again.
I mean, since we're talking about it.
Okay, and real quickly before we go, Tori has some budget. In my mind, based upon previous discussions and where the commission has gone with him, we may not be able to move fast enough, shall we say, to get him where he needs to be as we look at a new facility, so I think we need to have it on our radar that we may have to bump some budget funds if need be, but anyway, we'll keep working and come back to you specifically first with some ideas on those other-
As, as we talk today, I think that's, that's appropriate. If you can get us a plan, then we can wrap that and make budget decisions, you know, so, again, now we have a little bit of a deadline budget season to have this plan in place so we can start adding.
The properties to look at that, that are considerable too. I think we can figure out what's going to be the most fiscally responsible, what's going to be the best, what's going to be the best in the way of operations, public service, how, you know, how everything works. I think then we can get together, because I think we have a pretty good idea of what the needs are as far as the facility. It's just a matter of where we can plug it in that's going to make the most sense.
Well, we've got three or four options to look at, so go forth and look and come back.
Real quickly, where would you anticipate at the wellness complex if there was a site that was studied there?
That big gravel pit, not pit, but the big parking lot?
Somewhere in the big parking lot.
That'd be my thought. Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, out there, off of Olympus. Are you talking down?
I'm talking right above the National Guard.
Okay. North of, just basically north of YDC along the drive that goes through the park.
Between the Office Now and the Wellness Complex parking lot.
That would be my first thought, if we're talking about-
You got utilities right there, water and sewer, and everything's right in there.
FYI, the YDC Center is basically pulling utilities even further north, which makes it easier if we were to go that direction for Tori.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Now, let's try something new. Is there any discussion on the claims agenda? Anything for invoices, commissioner reports, credit applications, any questions on salary approval forms, payroll report, or alcohol expenses?
The only one I had was-
Do you have that commission report?
Yes, ma'am.
There was a, and it was more of a placement, and maybe it, because there's a Parks and Recreation Department, and that first one on it was paying Wilks for cremation, and I thought, "Why is that in the same GL code?"
And it shouldn't be, because those should be paid out of 136, not 138.
If you can find, it's towards the back, but anyway, it was 1,200 bucks to Wilks, and then there was a, some like Parks and Rec, and I just thought, "Okay, now we're parking cremations somewhere."
I see what you're seeing, but if you look, they're just on the same page.
Okay, not the same department.
I didn't, I didn't see it. I went through.
Because I was looking by department and whatever, but it was kind of funny to, and it probably- Okay, I thought it-
And then it hits Parks. So, it just runs on the same page.
Okay, so it's just paid.
I can totally see how you would.
Other than that, I didn't have any issues there at all. In fact, I would make the motion that we go ahead and approve the consent agenda and take care of all the things.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did have a question on salary reports. If you notice on the back of those at the top, there is a section that says legal review on the second page.
Yes, it's always been there, yes.
Would the commission be opposed to changing that to background check instead of legal review?
I think that's appropriate.
Okay, because when prior legal was here, they, and staffing was short in the office, HR took over that role, but has criteria as to when they need to bring it to legal review, and so if we just change that, then it doesn't look like HR is signing off on legal, so.
No, I think that's appropriate.
So, so do we just get rid of it totally, because, because HR review is right below it?
We do, but HR reviews it for different reasons, and I had that discussion with Matthew yesterday. So, background check is to ensure that we don't have inappropriate individuals working city around children, but-
But HR is doing the background check.
But the HR review is ensuring that the job was posted and that open job posting policies are being done.
So, would that then require an additional signature from HR saying, "Yes, we did the background check"?
So, well, I'm just thinking, we'll just change background, change legal review to background check, and then they'll just initial that it's been done, and then they will continue to do the information on the HR section where they ensure posting of jobs.
And I guess that would be, would we just put that as a checkbox underneath? So, you don't have two signatures?
No, because you may have a situation where legal does need to put comments, and we've had situations where there has been legal comments made, depending on misdemeanors or certain stuff like that. If there's nothing to do, they'll just initial it. It seems like a lot, but, but they are two very separate things, so I would like to keep them separate.
I say we try it, and if we need to adjust, we can adjust.
We'll make that change and get those sent out to departments.
Okay, with that, we are-
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to go ahead and-
We did that.
Do the claims, the claims, all of them?
Yeah.
And you voted yes. The claims is what I heard, and not, not the other stuff underneath.
And those things on the consent.
He said, he said the claims agenda.
Okay.
Consent agenda, claims agenda.
Which isn't the claims under the consent.
Are we okay with that?
Consent agenda has been taken off, and the claims agenda has been put on.
So, it's just a new word there, so, okay.
Okay.
Nancy's giving, Nancy's giving us the thumbs up.
Okay, Nancy giving you the thumbs up?
We will stand a germ for the day.